Next, 36 Walnut Road.
We're done. We're on.
Yep, we're ready to open the public hearing for RGFA site plan review, 36 Walnut Road. We've given this a little time of the public. If you could, if your team could perhaps try to go through the presentation in 15 minutes. And then we can spend about 10 or 15 minutes on questions and comments from the audience and the planning board. Yeah, first of all, could you explain what it is they're reviewing? What has triggered a site plan review? What is it proposed program?
Do you want to tell us? Jonathan Buckman, Anna Construction. We have, I developed this property. It has been sold to David Steinberg, who is the current occupant of the house. We're coming through for him. What he'd like to do is, he'd like to finish the room over the garage. And he'd like to, there's a three season porch out here, which he'd just like to put the screen in. And by doing that, we're going to take the RGFA over the 6,000. So that's why we're coming in front of you today.
Where did you start from? What square footage before the change?
Yeah, just under 6,000.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you. But 5,990?
98. Helen Anackit is the architect.
And what is the RGFA after you've made the change?
It's, um...
7,000?
Seven, no, the 11.8.
No, 7,000.
No, 7,000, but the percentage is still at 4,000.
Yeah, it's 7,079. So it's going to be 325 square feet additional in here. And for the room over the garage, it's another 726 square feet. So we're increasing it just over 1,081 square feet.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so what changes are you proposing in the landscape?
So consequently, that triggers the changes I'm making in the landscape and on the lighting. After our site walk this morning, I went back to the office, made all the revisions that will be discussed as far as the landscape goes. Added more spruces up here to the neighbor next door. Took out all the lawn across along the road. This is all now pine and oak leaf mulch in all the planting as well, not just where the lawn was. This darker color is that mulching material. And there was a few issues from the last, we had our last site walk last week about the maple trees that I have planted here right now being too close to the overhead wires, which is this dark line right here. So those maple trees are being moved out to the sides. These are two here, there's three on this side. And then lower planting anywhere from eight to 12 feet in height is being masked along the road. There's dwarf evergreens, maximum rhododendrons, viburnums, azaleas, and hybrid rhododendrons. The whole length of the property over to the property line on this side. The lighting, we were over, it was 27,000 lumens. So I went back to the board and we took out two post lights, existing post lights. Three lanterns on the second floor, wall lanterns outside, two in the back, one in the front. And all the floods, there were three sets of floods, as we all saw this this morning outside. All those are coming down. So by taking those lights out, I am now down to 21,000 lumens 280.
See, it can be done. And all the fixtures start to fire.
And then Jonathan, I spoke to Wolfers who supplied these fixtures. And you've got two options for dark sky fixtures. There's a device, I think it's about $50 each for each fixture, that you can actually screw in. And that'll give you the dark light on it.
Throws the light down.
On the existing fixtures without having to go to a whole new fixture. You can't change the glass.
Or you have to change it?
No, none of this. So you have to change the whole fixture or put this adapter in, which Wolfers said they can do on this.
Was this adapter, we had something on the water for like a while back. And it was a light bulb, especially dark side of the light. But when it burned out, it had to be replaced with the same kind of bulb. This isn't bad.
It's a complete screw-in adapter that goes into the existing.
So when the bulb burns out, it's just replaced?
Exactly, it's about $50 per each without going to new fixtures. They can do that.
Sue, on Sunset, we saw this where basically it was like a metal, almost like a sheet that went over.
Exactly.
And it works, works very well. And at least beneficial in that it's not, you're not replacing the light bulb. And it basically is just a shield that goes over it.
The light bulb blows, you just replace the bulb, it doesn't affect the housing.
It's like a housing. Exactly, it's like a whole housing that goes into the white fixture.
So but your lumens are up to 21,000?
No, they're down. Now it's down to 21,000, 280. It was 27,000.
So a lot of lumens, but it's still allowable.
They just about blanch them until they drop. They didn't believe it could be done, but then they did so easily.
He took him off doors.
Hours.
Just up a door, I mean, it's doors, so we just take him in on the doorway with a couple of post lights.
The other thing we talked about was the generator. Otherwise, I don't know if the locomotive. Uh, it's sitting, it's sitting over there. That, that, you estimate that that, that's going to generate 65 DVA at the property line, 63?
64, I think we're at 45. And it was about 63 at the property line.
What are we at, 45?
Yeah, my, my, in a previous email to Jonathan, I had said that the board would require some fence between generator and that property line. Because there's no way that you can meet that threshold.
Does that have the baffling housing over there?
It does, but it's not a attenuation.
Oh, what can I get? Yeah, but is it?
It's actually not that much.
Is it a diesel?
It's for the whole, it's for the whole house. It's for the whole house. But you know, it's not going to be at a full load. So I think at 64 DVA, it's at full load. These things never run full load because you're not running all your equipment and everything on it. I understand. We could put an enclosure, like we've done before, on the side of the wall to protect the neighbor on the right side. If that's something you want.
That should be what we can do then.
Put an enclosure from the wall across, because they're worried about the sound going this way. It's not going to go against the house, so we'll just wrap it. We've got at least three, you've got to have three feet.
We've done that before.
It's so difficult to absorb sound.
We just can't put it on the back, we can put it on the side and then around the front if you need.
But you have to in here?
You've got to have three feet to a fire. And also the access.
Is that going to get it down to 40 DVA?
No.
It's still not going to.
No, I mean, if, um, the sound enclosures take around 12 off, I mean, you'd have to take 20 off. I mean, the main thing is it's a, it's probably just below 50, but, um, you know, I mean, you'd have to... It's 35 feet, it's right at the setback corner. So I mean, it's right at 35 feet from the property line. Um, you just can't, and when they, I'm sorry, 45, yeah, that's correct. But when they measure like the 62, that's measuring it at 23 feet already. They're not measuring it like right next to the unit when they do that standard measurement. It's based on already being halfway to the property line. So, um, you know, the enclosures, if you have the sound blanket on the, on the inside, it basically, uh, depending on the manufacturer, can reduce it up to 15, but we're not going to hit 40.
Well, let's, let's take a stack of it and talk about what we talked about earlier. Like if this had come before us, what would we have required then?
We've never had a problem getting, getting to the standard.
Getting to 40, right.
Right, never.
So?
Well, in this case, you've got the locomotive is sitting there.
Right.
So, you know, maybe it needs to be fully enclosed.
I don't think they can.
It might be a bit exhausting.
No, you run your exhaust out, of course, but...
I've never seen one fully enclosed, seen it on either side.
You've got a whole powerhouse.
I mean, we could require them to reduce the size of this and go with what it would require. I mean, if this had come before us, this is what we would have required.
That's right.
All right.
Right, this is the conundrum.
This is the conundrum. Oh, it's a conundrum, and we're the bad guys now.
You can get these after the fact, applications, and then you have to, you're trying to apply the standards that you typically do.
The way that you designed it was a technicality not to come to site plan approval.
Yeah, I've done four through year over the years, I've been developing for about 12 years.
I know, so you understand that, we understand the technicality.
I understand.
Just to get built without any kind of input. And so, but obviously, you have a customer who wants to have this additional stuff.
Yep.
And now we, you know, we have our, we have standards which people seem to live with pretty well.
And it's possible that, I assume that put the generator on the house before it was sold. This wasn't a custom add-on.
No, this was...
It was a custom add-on.
He added, he added the solid generator and put this generator. We put the pad and we put the conduit.
Right, right.
We don't put the generator in.
When was it, when was this generator installed? They just moved in.
They just moved in, but he bought the house once, about three, four months ago, naturally with the...
Okay, did they come before us in the building setup or anything like that?
We got a permit.
No, they got a building.
We got a building, we got a generator.
So wait a minute, so if you have a 3,000 square foot house, I can put in a 100 decibel at the setback line?
The lines are comprised of dimensions, we don't have a...
It's within the setbacks.
Not just the standard.
Oh, that's interesting.
Well, something to talk about, but...
We can put the enclosure in for you.
They get it down to 50, around 50.
Basically, we, for 15 year path, we basically had a requirement that they put in a fence. They measured what that reduced it down to. And then there was two products, two basically outdoor curtains that you hang on the inside of the fence.
Sound attenuation.
Exactly, that then are wanted to reduce it down another 12 to 15. And basically, exactly. So, so that if they don't meet it with the fence at the property line, say hitting the 50, they have to put in that curtain that then reduces it down another 12 to 15, depending on the product that they use.
So with the fence and the curtain, you could get down to 40?
Oh, yeah.
You'd probably be getting close to 40.
I've never seen the curtain, I've never seen the material, but we'd have to find out what it is.
Yeah.
What do we use for the curtain block? The curtain block?
If it can do that, we'll do it.
Yeah, well, that was one that, um, they had to put up this, this noise curtain as well on the inside of the fence.
Right.
And you want to see it. And that one was pretty close to the property line.
Yes, it was, but it was also like a smaller, one of the smaller generacs that we saw.
Yeah.
That we saw.
I mean, we, I mean, the target should be to do what we have to do to get it down to pretty close to the standard.
All right, and we'll give, we'll let them get away with not replacing the generator?
Joe knows what it is.
I have, I have four different products that with 15 year path, I gave them and they selected what they felt was reasonable.
We'll look at them and do them.
But we have to understand that this is a gift. This is the, this is the bending on the planning board's part, not required if it will come out.
Recognizing, recognizing. It was pre-existing, yeah. The building department does not have that as a standard, which sounds to me, you know, very good.
Okay.
The other thing we talked about was what's going on on the street down there with the trailer and all.
That's all going to be coming out. Let's say, we're going to be moving that. And it's actually, it's way on the property right now.
It's up here.
It's way up there. But I'm going to move, I am moving that out. We're going to, when we do this project, we need the trailer right now, all our tools are in it. But I'm going to move it out on the 7th, 17th to my next project, which I'm going to on the 16th.
All right.
And we also talked about no windows in the garage portion.
No changes on the...
No changes to the exterior.
We're not putting any in.
Can that be codified in our decision?
Yeah, it can put in.
So is this like a room without windows?
It's got two, surround with a side, and it's got a coupla on the top.
And your idea about grass being limited, and now I'm seeing a change to needle and wheat mulch.
Yes.
So you're going to try to get the worst on that.
Well, on the street, we're going to have...
And on which side, I mean, everybody's up by the name of which side, we call to speak in the side.
Those are Colorado blue spruces, and they're 10 to 12s.
And there's enough sunlight up there?
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of light this way, and there's plenty of light down here.
And that'll block the...
These three and these three are the same height. The ones out here are a little bigger. The ones out there are beginning.
No, these are all the same size, we're all 10 to 12, 12 to 14s.
And they'll have to go in in the spring, obviously.
I don't know if you can get the stock right now.
No. We'll do those things in spring.
What are you doing to work on the garage?
As soon as we get the approval, right, right away, we get them on. Are we going to talk about an escrow if they do it?
That's what I was just wondering, you know, either some sort of escrow or, um, or permitting some sort of temporary occupancy or, I don't know what.
They already have, they already have, aren't they?
Right, I know, but like for the signing off on the, on the space. Yeah, I, that's, the timing of something like this is, we're going to see more of this as, like, over the winters, we get this type of request.
Typical thing is to put it in escrow.
Yeah.
In the deposit?
Yeah.
For the laundromat?
Yeah.
How much are you looking for?
Well...
We typically have a cost from you provide to our landscape consultant for the material as well as the labor. Two reviews and verifies whether it is acceptable or not, and then, um, you can make any adjustments if needed.
10% for the escrow.
Um, but we, for, we require the full cost.
The full cost?
Right.
Okay, true, okay.
So we can get that for you? Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, you know that to me so I can send it up.
I'll get, yeah, I'll try stuff for you and give it to you.
That work, your work? What did you remember that could be off?
Yes.
Any comments from the audience on this project?
Um, the only thing I, and I mentioned to the property owner that I would read it, um, you for the record, because she stopped by the office today. Um, let me just scroll down to it. This is from Jamie Grossman, the butter. Um, Mr. Buckman has deposited building materials as well as a trailer and snowplow on the very edge of the property at 36 Walnut against my property. I have had repeated complaints from neighbors who think that the items belong to the trailer doing work for me. This vehicle and building materials have been parked in this spot for at least a year and a half. When I asked Mr. Buckman over the summer to move the trailer back, I'll put to repair some damaged landscaping. He refused to remind me that I was over the property line, even though there was, there is now a purchase easement or specifically request that Mr. Buckman remove the vehicle and building materials and trash from the property immediately. We have lived for the last two years with multiple vehicles parked in the street, building materials stored against my property line. Until such material and vehicles are removed, I formally object to any approval from the planning board to permit Mr. Buckman to resume work on 36 Walnut. I would also like confirmation that when and if Mr. Buckman does resume work at 36 Walnut, that no one working in the house will be permitted to park on the street or store or dump building materials on the property line of 44 Walnut as well.
Okay, so to answer that, first of all, it's a private way, it's not a public street. The owner of the property owns the middle of the street, this is not a town street. Secondly, the trailer is off the property. And thirdly, this neighbor to the right of us, Jamie Grossman, built a wall. This entire wall is, the stone wall is the property line. She built this entire wall onto the property. And when I bought the property from the previous owners, I asked them to remove the piece of wall because to get clean title to sell it to whoever's going to buy it, we'd never be able to sell the property. She would not have removed it, she wouldn't remove it. And in the end, her attorney approached us, said that they'll take an easement from us. So I gave them an easement on the property so they could keep their driveway so they wouldn't have to move everything over for the cost of, it was probably $100,000. So we granted them the easement. And the trailer actually is parked right up here. The right of way actually goes right, follows this line all the way along. So we're well onto the property, and we're not near her property. And the property that she wants to maintain is actually on my client's property now. And she's not meant to be going over there. She has an easement, she doesn't own the property, she has the right to leave a wall there. So that's the discrepancy, and I am going to move the trailer.
I mean, all of that, taken into consideration, what you said about five minutes ago was that you intend to move it by December 17th anyway.
Correct, I am going to.
So we can, we can put that in condition and...
Absolutely, 17th, 17th, everything will be gone. And it's not trash, it's actually material that we're using and the trailer. But we will get, by the 17th, it will be gone.
Some of her other requests are sort of state or conditions or decisions, as you probably know.
Yep.
You can't park on the street for the work that's being done, and I think that was one of her requests.
Right.
So...
If you could forward the cut sheet on that light shield, install it in the...
Yep, I'll give it to you.
I'll forward it to you.
I'll give it to you.
Yep, no problem. Any other comments? Yes, could you just identify?
91 Walnut Road, Raspby. And I also had a problem with too many construction trucks and everything parked right across. So I've come out of the driveway, it's not my space. Sometimes there's so many of them parked, you really have to mewl yourself. And at times when deliveries came in, they almost went right over our property, turned into the driveway. And I spoke with Brian, who was the person of charge. Several times, that when the trucks come in, please make sure that they obey the road, the street as you turn into the property and not take a real wide turn. Because I do have a gas line right there, and it's marked by a flag.
Which one is yours?
I'm right across from the, from 36 Walnut. So when they come in, they take such a wide turn, that they come right on to the pine area and right over the gas area and then turn.
These are large trucks that are making deliveries into the property, into the driveway. And you saw the driveway, the turning way, this is not there. And then when we did go over the property, we did, Brian did go over, he did re-rake it.
No.
No, no, he did. And we actually love to, we actually, we went over...
I'm always there.
I don't want to argue with you.
I go out and I do it myself.
I understand, and I've seen you outside, you do a great job.
I see the tire tracks all over the place.
If there's ever a problem, we will come and rake it out for you. We went over your mailbox too. One of our, one of our trucks hit the mailbox, I replaced the whole mailbox. We replaced it.
Right, right. So, you know, you have to be careful of everything for the project. I know you have a lot of work going on there, construction people coming through. But I think you have to be...
We've got 30, 40 people in the house at a time. We do park on the side of the street up against the property.
And sometimes both sides.
But you're not going to be able to here.
Oh, no, we understand, but that was for a full house construction.
But in this case, we're going to park on site.
We will. There's not that much room, but we will.
There's not much room, that's the problem, there's not much room, and sometimes when you should come out. You know, the trucks, and sometimes, once in a while, the truck also on my side, and the truck on my side. There's not much space.
If anybody who goes in your property, I'll give you my number, you call me, and I'll make sure it gets taken care of.
Sure.
We will take care of it. We apologize if we went over your property.
Just a point, this is just finishing out a room, which I assume is almost...
It's not going to be as many people.
It wouldn't be as many people, and we'd need to bring in full laminated beams and all kinds of stuff.
We have to bring in steel, we've got some big steel beams coming in. There's posts in there.
So you're going to have big old trucks coming around?
Over the...
Yeah, we've got sheet trucks coming in. We've got a couple of big deliveries, and then we're done. This is not going to be like building a whole house. I mean, it's going to be maybe four deliveries, and that's going to be...
Steel beams.
We have to bring in steel beams, because there's posts inside. And if you take the posts out, we're going to span.
When the landscaping goes up, large trucks that are going to be big trucks, they'll have to be careful.
They'll park on the side and unload.
It's not a question of parking, I just don't want to destroy our property. We try to keep our pine bed as natural as possible.
No, your pine bed was the one that we all looked at this morning and said, let's make it look like that. It's beautiful.
It's very natural with the...
Yeah, no, absolutely, it's perfect.
Maybe slippers growing in the pine bed. And those have, you know...
In danger.
Why not?
I will let everybody know, we'll make sure we do. Any, any other comments?
Well, I already mentioned this morning, we're notified through the town prior, instead of just the letter.
Right.
If anything else is done.
In this case, they should have been notified if it was a hearing.
Well, all the butters were notified with a separate mailing that identified the site walk as well as tonight's meeting. The only thing that didn't happen was the publication in the prior.
Oh.
That's the only thing, it was posted on the web. Individual, you know, the 300 feet surrounding this property, all the butters got a, got a mailing, so.
But also now that the task is handed for us, it's a special...
Yeah, we can actually say that, you know, say that future amendments to this project will require a full public hearing.
No problem. Any, any other comments here? Um, in that case, I guess we could, we're still waiting, are we waiting for, we're waiting for the...
Just a cut sheet on the, on the...
I have it online, I'll give it to you, I'll send it to you tonight, I've got it, I've got it on my email.
It's basically just writing a decision.
Yeah.
All the plans are, have already been revised.
Oh, um, so I suppose that we're not really waiting for anything concerning the generator sound baffling system. That's just going to be...
It's going to be in there.
That's going to be in the decision.
We're going to just do it. And we'll put the fabric, give me the fabric, and we'll put the fabric on it as well.
Yeah, okay. So in that case, I suppose we could, we could close the hearing.
And move to closing hearing on the 17th.
It was technically a hearing, basically just a public hearing.
Well, we'll second anyone. It says hearing. Uh, second anyone? I did, oh, sorry. Paul Taylor?
Aye.
So we will, what date are we going to review the decision?
Uh, the 9th.
All right, so we'll, we'll do the draft decision review on the 9th of December. Before we become, I mean, we're not taking testimony or anything. We're just going to memorialize the things that we've talked about in this meeting. We all, we all overcome, but you all, you all aren't. But that's when we'll look at the decision and vote on it. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Between you and I, ask the question, which has nothing to do with this, why is the maximum size of the house?
Relax, we don't...
Your technical thinking isn't a maximum. What's going to happen on your lawn, key word, not performing law, the CBA tends to limit size. There's a lot of that. We have wood zone, um, there's no upper limit, there's just a trigger because site plan and review. So here, I mean, we want 6,000, it's a trick. We may be going fine, but then as things go up, we then are mitigating...
It's important that people know that, because it looks, to me, I'm a bit...
It looks like areas want you over. So we've still got a fight, so they're going to be, Dr. Burke, and what any day, so we can get a motion and get it to my... I'm going to watch Joe for...
Exactly.
And that's my question. That's obvious. Okay, that's obvious, thank you.
Because they know it's a game.
They know it's a game.
Well, that's what everyone feels, we've built up into that.
Right, well, they really didn't, so it's a technical...
And it's how, and it's how, and it's all the little poles that were...
It's important, I want to tell them. I just can give you a comment, which in fact, people who come to their meetings are not aware of the upper limits, where there isn't an upper limit. So they, I, I was under the impression that, so after 6,000, you're sort of playing games. But it's not really the case, it's really not. As a, as a member here, I was, I'm confused, and so people go over and say, they have two each. Are they playing games, or do they, as you were saying? And it's sad, just to see that a lot of these guys are playing games.
Come on.
And you're very sweet, I would just say. I'm not affected by you.
You're very nice.
We know they're very sweet, but every time it's horrible.
Because the next door, the people next door, you're being sweet to the people who have close to game. Not for the people who have something to lose, you're very generous.
No, no. It's not we got to know it.
You were close.
I just have a question.
It's a matter of negotiation.
You're very nice people.
Thank you. Nobody ever says we're nice.
I can't say you're nice.
Some people will put in a... To share, like the fridge, maybe some, others.
That's right. It's not enough.
Others, they can also bring a jacuzzi out of the yard. So, but there's no, only for planning board projects, there's a limit that we try to hit. But if they, if you put in a generator, you can come in front of us, we can put one as large as you want. That's why we try to drag the total noise, so it's not...
Yeah, but be careful.
But what kind of use, once whatever, diesel truck generator, if it takes long as it needs, set back.
But there was a pool there before.
No.
Oh, yes.
There wasn't.
Oh, is there?
Anyway, you have an interesting job.
It's like, is that like the Chinese curse? You're like, you're interested in oil.
Very well, but...
But that's, it has the size of the car. And you...